I call to order the July 17, 2017, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And first item, approval of minutes of June 26, 2017, regular meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the minutes of the June 26, 2017, regular meeting as submitted. Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Good. It's now marginally past the hour of 7:00 PM. We have David Poynter, Fire Chief, introduction of firefighter, paramedic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a seat there. So this has been quite the process. Tom Monigold, firefighter, paramedic, Tom Monigold, retired, not retired, he resigned, he took a position on in Burlington, Mass. as a firefighter, paramedic. They're just expanding a new paramedic program out there, so I went up there with him. So he originally posted the position in early April. We got 12 applicants. We moved of those 12, five onto the oral board. Bill sat on the oral board that day. One of those was moved onto a chief's interview, and as I've talked to you before, I'm pretty picky in who I hire, and I wasn't willing to make an offer. So I say it's time to go back out. Went back out, got, for some strange reason, 12 more applicants. Of those, we moved eight onto the oral board, and of those, three came onto me. I'm here tonight to introduce you to firefighter, paramedic, Joel Rosenkranz. Joel stood out, in my opinion, from the rest, from the very beginning. His passion, and you've heard me use that word more than once when I talk about employees, his passion was there, his professionalism, and his commitment to the job. His commitment to the job was quite obvious by looking at his resume and all the classes he's taken, and the extra things that you don't have to take, but you go out of your way to take, and I saw quite a few of those, which really impressed me. And then within the chief's interview, Kim and I had a good time picking on him, and it went very well, went very well. So Joel comes to us from Oxford Fire, which he'd been a full-time firefighter, paramedic there since 2012. Prior to that, he got his start with Douglas as a call firefighter, and he worked per diem as well, I believe, right?
I did.
One of the great things is that he's a firefighter-one-two academy trained, which means after his two-week orientation period, he gets thrown into the wolves, and he goes right on shift. We don't have to send him away to the academy, we don't have to worry about his training. We do have to get him approved through our medical director, Dr. Tennyson, which will hopefully run fairly quickly. He will be assigned to B-shift, to Captain Tev, and that'll bring three of our shifts up to five. And then we'll have one more hire to make till we hit the five of shifts, so we're very excited about that. If I could get guys to stop retiring, it would be terrific. I could get there, but it just happens. Joel does hold a BS from UMass, Amherst, and what's it in? Come on.
Landscape architecture.
Landscape architecture, that's what it was. So we're hoping to have a pretty station. And as I said, he's got many, many other fire service classes and certifications that we're really looking forward to. One of the great things he has is, right now, we only have one member of our department on the District 14 tech rescue team, and that's firefighter Jamie Desatell. Joel's actually on the District 7 tech team already, so hopefully we can transfer that membership, and take all that training, take advantage of it, and have another member on the District 14 team. And I think Jamie said he's looking forward to playing and tying knots with him, which I hope has something to do with repelling, but I don't know. So normally, we would swear I'm in, but obviously Andy's not available for us tonight, so I just want to take a few moments and introduce you to firefighter Joel Rosenkranz. Today was his first day.
Excellent. Joel, very nice to have you here. Would you like to say a few words?
I told him he had to speak. No, I'd just like to say thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate the kind words, and I'm really looking forward to working for the town of Northborough. I did my research, too, on the town, and this fit exactly what I was looking for from a cultural standpoint, as well as everything else that I'm looking for, so thank you.
Well, it's certainly very nice. I mean, Chief Poynter is very discerning, and so with all the qualifications you bring to the job and everything, and basically hit the ground running, so to speak, it's just going to be a great experience to have you onboard, so welcome. Board members, Lesel?
Yes, thank you very much for coming to Northborough, and I completely agree with what Jason just said. I know Chief is very discerning, and he is a wonderful chief, by the way. I think you made a great decision, but you come to us very well qualified, and we could not be more thrilled, as Jason just said, hit the ground running, and to have someone like you, I think we feel very, very lucky to have that, so we appreciate that very much. And as I always do, other members of your department, if they could please introduce themselves this evening, I think it's great that they're here to show their support for you.
Scott Reynolds, firefighter, paramedic.
Doug Bolzberg, firefighter, paramedic.
Jamie Desatell, firefighter, EMT.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Captain.
No, no, captain.
Oh, that's right. Sorry about that, yes. That's right. Thank you for being here as well. We appreciate that very, very much. You have a wonderful department to work for, so we appreciate your serving in Northborough. Thank you.
Don?
Well, and congratulations and welcome to Northborough. Would you like to introduce us to your family that's standing behind the man?
Absolutely, absolutely. This is, I owe it all to my wife Kathleen, my daughter Hannah, and my son Jonah. Definitely.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, I sat on the interview, the second interview board, too, and Joel was very impressive. He was a standout in the interviews, and I think he'd be a great fit for the town of Northborough, and like everybody else, had hit the ground running, and very impressive, and welcome to Northborough.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm all right. There you go.
Oh, sure.
We don't need to hug.
No, we don't have to hug, we hug, guy.
That's before and after the start of the shift. It's a group thing they do, it's, you know.
Sure, it's R-O-S-E-N-K-R-A-N-T-Z. Correct. I have a hard time with that as well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joel, congratulations. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I said, you two stay. Come on, guys.
Bye.
Bye now. Great. Now past the hour of 7:05, and we have Kelly Burke, Senior Center Director for the Innovator of the Year Award, and presentation on Tax Work Off Program. Hello, how are you doing?
I'm very well, thank you.
Very good, very good.
More hardware for us.
I'm sorry?
More hardware.
More hardware.
I'm keeping it, though. That's just show and tell, Bill. Right. It's a big thing to lug around, but I don't know how the celebrities do it. So I came, I came before your board in December of 2015 to get your support for the Act On Alzheimer's, is what it was called then, and now we've renamed that Come To Be Dementia Friendly, and we've had great success with volunteers from the community to spread the word about dementia, Alzheimer's, and, and how we can be a more friendly community towards folks with that. We reached out to the community with surveys, to every sector of the community, actually, and we got a great response, but people really felt like they needed to know more about dementia and Alzheimer's, and they needed to know what the resources were. So now we've assembled a packet for all of the businesses. We have the support of Chief Liver, who's going to send out officers and give that information to the, to the community businesses, which is great. And on June 9th of 2017, at the Massachusetts Councils on Aging, we received this award. So Northborough got an award, Hudson and Marlboro. We all worked as a team, and it was, it was great. Through Bay Path Elder Services, Christine Alessandro, their executive director, wrote a grant, and I can't say enough about the experience that everybody had, and I'm looking forward to keeping it going, like every other initiative, right?
Very good. Thank you very much. Comments from the board? Lesel?
This is great. What type of information would be in the pamphlets and things that, let's say, Chief Liver distributes, for example?
There's, in the packet, there is a, kind of a tips for businesses if they think that somebody has dementia or Alzheimer's, some of the tips that they might use to help those people out. The resources are all listed there, the Senior Center for one, Bay Path Elder Services, the Alzheimer's Association, all places where people can get more information, and all the phone numbers are listed there as well. There's a sticker for their door, that they're Come To Be Dementia Friendly, so that people can recognize that when they go to that business.
That's great.
And we just want to continue to be a resource, because as, as things are added to resources for people with Alzheimer's and dementia and their families, we want to be able to keep people up to date on that, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Bill?
I think it's great, because a lot of us is starting to live longer, everybody in the different communities, so a lot of these things, I mean, every family has to deal with dementia and Alzheimer's, I mean, so it's very, very common in Northborough, but all surrounding communities, too, so it's great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don?
Kelly, just thank you again for all your efforts. The Northborough Senior Center is such a thriving place for information, for classes, for everything, and with you at the helm, it's really continued to grow and succeed.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you very much. It's a wonderful program. And, as I said, everybody has a family member, or a friend, or someone that knows who's experiencing this, it's a very difficult situation, and to have these support services in place really does make a difference.
Yeah, it does definitely help. So we had a great, like I said, a great action team made up of volunteers from the town. We couldn't do it without that, and Jocelyn Earhart, our outreach coordinator, and Carol DiRienzo, a resident of town, were the co-chairs, and just brought everything along beautifully, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Part two?
Part two, presentation on Tax Work Off.
This is, again, I think something that's really going to be beneficial to the seniors in town. The town meeting in 2003, the town voted to adjust the eligibility for senior citizens to qualify for property tax exemption, which is the Tax Work Off Program. And no adjustments have been made since then, so we're finding people coming into the Senior Center with the application, and the income guidelines were lower than some of the people that were coming in to take advantage of the program. The program works very well. Seniors are screened, do an application, and then are placed in departments in town, and the Senior Center really kind of employs a lot of those seniors, and we get a lot of benefits from, from them. For working their hours, they're paid $9 an hour. The income eligibility is $25,000 for a single person and $40,000 for a couple. And then they work about 84 hours to get a $750 abatement. So what I'm proposing for your review is a bump in that income eligibility from $40,000, from $25,000 to now $40,000 for a single person, and $55,000 for a couple, up from $40,000. And the abatement to $1,000 for their property taxes, and also a bump up to what the minimum wage is now for the Commonwealth, which is $11 per hour. So the folks work their time in each department, and then the following February, they get that $750 now off of their property taxes. So it's not paid, you know, with a check, but it is paid through the abatement through the taxes, so.
Very good. Questions, comments? Bill?
Kelly, what kind of work are they doing? Actually working in the Senior Center, or do they leave the Senior Center?
No, it's, well, you know, we have, I can't help but talk about the bistro at 119, which is our restaurant, so a lot of folks work in there, maybe doing the register or serving, and then the front desk at the Senior Center is populated by a lot of volunteers as well, and some of them are tax work-off people. We also have people that work at the town clerk's office, and the assessor's office, and the Board of Health and Building Department, so.
That's great.
It is great, because it's not, it's not just a benefit, but it's something that people can, can work off, and they, you know, they, they enjoy their work, I think, for the most part. They're, they're happy to come in and, and help out in the town.
Excellent. Don?
Kelly, how many people do you anticipate additional now that would come in and that you could utilize?
We, we anticipate about 15 slots for people to come in and work. We've had less than that over the years, but I think that this might encourage people to come forward and, and apply for the program.
Thank you.
Lesel?
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of this, I think for a couple of reasons. It brings us in line with other communities, and I know that a lot of other things that we work on as a board really do the same thing for. You know, we, we look to see what other communities are doing, are we in line with that? So that's reason number one, and number two, and you also said this in your proposal, that it doesn't, it will attract more people, that, that it's important to have a lot of volunteers. And if there are people who fall within the guidelines, more people that fall within the guidelines are more likely to come in and say, hey, look, can I, what can I do to help out, and this, this applies to me, so.
Exactly. I think, I think it will be very well received.
Yeah, thank you.
It's very, John?
I just wanted to make a point that this benefit, or this, this program, first of all, I'm actually pleased, this program came from Chelmsford, where I came from. We were the first ones to innovate it in the state, and it has some, it has had some tax issues that the legislature has cleared up, so that we could actually do this, do this program correctly. One of the points that I wanted to make is, the town, in addition to the abatement that they're allowed, the town picks up the OBR and the Medicare tax, so the $1,000, we're recommending going from 750 to 1,000, that's what they actually get. So it's not $1,000 net of Medicare tax and everything. So that adds to the cost of the program, but it makes it nice and clean for the participants, and frankly, the, the town benefits greatly, the Senior Center and the departments here that we, we've used the senior work-off participants. I think it's been a win all around for everybody. The, the delta here, going from the 750 to 1,000, assuming 15 participants, you know, inclusive of the OBR and the Medicare piece of it, we're talking about, you know, roughly a $4,200, you know, increase in the program. But our goal is to, to reach more people. One of the things that Kelly mentioned when she brought this to me to discuss was, some of the folks that had been participants in the past, because the income requirements or eligibility thresholds haven't been moved in quite a while, they used to participate, now they no longer qualify, so we want to make sure we recapture those folks, that they're able to participate, and increase the benefit a little bit, and also bring them to at least the, the new minimum wage. You know, we should be paying our, our seniors the same that we're paying the kids that are working in the rec department and the, in the library, so it is an equity issue. But all around, fantastic program. We've averaged about 11 people in the program. It bounces a little high, a little low, depending, but we want to make sure, we believe, by doing, making these changes, it'll keep the program, you know, vibrant and, and participation stable. Because again, we benefit from this. This is, it's a supplemental workforce, in some regard, for the Senior Center and some of the other departments, so. All around, I just think it's a, it's a win for the community and for the, and for the residents.
Very constructive program. I was going to make the same observation, really, that it's a benefit to have the people involved and engaged in various town services, and I'm sure they enjoy, you know, doing that work and making that contribution, so it's, it's just very beneficial and, and to our benefit as a town overall, so. With that?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to increase eligibility requirements for the Senior Tax Work Off Program from $25,000 to $40,000 for a single-person household, and from 40 to 55 for a household with two or more members, to increase the abatement amount from 750 to 1,000, and to increase the wage amount from $9 to $11 per hour.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Excellent. Now past the hour of 7:10, Scott Sharpontier, DPW Director, informational presentation regarding completed water sewer rate study. And also Chris Woodcock?
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Chairman, Chris Woodcock from Woodcock Associates is here. We've completed another rate study for the water and sewer enterprise funds, projecting the anticipated new rates for FY '18. We issued a, the rate study itself, and a kind of a cover memorandum that summarizes where we are with the rates. I'll let Chris fill in some of the, some of the details, but the broad brush is that the water rates are being proposed to be increased. They have not been increased since 2011, with the exception of the base charge that was introduced in 2014. We're proposing a 5% rate increase on the water side. The sewer rates, with the uncertainty of our relationship with Marlboro, we're proposing to continue the sewer rate increases along the same lines as in the past, another 20% rate increase. The hope and the, and the objective, and what's, what's represented in the rate study and, and the financial tables, is that resolution be arrived at with Marlboro this coming fiscal year, so that rate adjustments can be more reflective of what the actual agreement is. So, and that, that's reflected in future projected rate increases.
You know, I, I work all over the Commonwealth, and I've just got to say that having seen, more often than not, it seems, when I'm here, there's somebody new being added to police, fire, EMS, and, and seeing the other officers come in support, seeing the families there as a resident, really makes me happy, proud, feel safe, you know, that our, our public service officials in this town have the support of others in their department, that families are part of the community, it, I, I just, you know, I've seen it a number of times here. I don't see it in other cities and towns in the Commonwealth, to the extent I see it here in Northborough, and I just thought you guys ought to know that this is, as I said, as a resident, it makes me really happy and proud to see.
On behalf of the board, on behalf of the town?
We have great public service officials in this.
Appreciate those comments.
Anyways, aside from that, as Scott said, there hasn't been a water rate increase in a number of years. We're looking at a 5% increase in the water rates this year. There are a number of projects coming forward with the water department, expenses going up. We're now fully ensconced with the MWRA, which means that Northborough has some of the very best water in North America. I don't know if you remember when I told you a few years ago that the MWRA water, when they taste contest, is the best tasting water in North America, a few years ago, was number three this past year. It's never, ever lost any taste test to any bottled water, ever, in history. We have outstanding water here, and it's going to cost, it should cost another 5% more this coming year. There hasn't been an increase in a while other than the base charges, Scott said, and it's still a really good value that we're getting. It looks like going forward, because, because whenever I do this, I'm looking forward for four, five, six years, and it looks like going forward that we're going to probably need increases in the water rate of about 5% going forward, maybe a little bit more. The town's always had some good reserves in water and sewer enterprises that have allowed you and the water and sewer commissioners to have quite a bit of flexibility in terms of funding improvements, buying meters without having to borrow, that type of thing. And it's been managed financially and run very well to, in order to keep down some of those costs. But the reserves are starting to go down, and it looks like we're going to need 5% increases for the next few years, maybe a little bit more, two or three years out on the water side. Not surprising, water generally across the country is going up at at least twice the rate of inflation. So that's, without any increases for the last five years, we've done awfully well not to have those increases, but I think we should be expecting them again going forward. Sewer side, a different question, and it's, I'm sure you're getting as tired as I am coming to you every year saying, we haven't got any resolution with Marlboro, we haven't got any resolution, we don't know what's going on. Things at times seem to go from, from bad to worse with the situation with Marlboro. As Scott said, I think there's hope that maybe within this next fiscal year, that we've just started, that we can get that resolved. I think it's important to do it, it's, we need the capacity, we're using the capacity. I think Northborough's made it very clear all along that we are willing to pay our fair share, but we're not willing to pay more than our fair share. And unfortunately, I think Marlboro in recent years has been asking Northborough to pay far more than its fair share. So there's an awful lot of uncertainty involved with the sewer rates. We've continued to apply increases from what they had been charging before they, they decided to triple or quadruple the rates a year or so ago. And we've also been putting money aside to pay for the debt. They had improvements, you know, six, seven years ago, now major improvements at the Westerly Plant, that cost in the order of $20 million, $30 million, and 10 of it with a grant. They've sold the bonds, they wouldn't tell us what the bond costs were, but they were state money, so we got them from the state. And we've been putting aside money to make what we think will be our share of payments if and when, when we finally reach agreement with Marlboro. And that's the good news. You're laughing, John. I still think it's when.
So I was clearing my throat.
You're clearing your throat, okay. I'm hoping when, I guess I'm being optimistic that we're going to get somewhere with Marlboro after all these years. So there's money that's, that's been put aside in the enterprise funds to make those payments, and it's substantial. It's over $2.5 million that we may be owing to Marlboro on the debt, and we have that to pay them if we can finally just agree with them on, on some fairly simple, straightforward things that we're trying to do with them. Looking forward on the sewer rates, I'm thinking that after this year, we don't have to continue to do the 20%. We might be able to drop down to 10%, and maybe even five after that, after a second year, if things get straightened out with Marlboro. Huge if there, obviously, because we don't know how things are going to end up in these, these negotiations with the contract with them. I think I have a pretty good sense of what a fair amount would be that, that Northborough should be paying to Marlboro. It's very different from what Marlboro thinks, but I've been around the block a lot on these. I've put three kids through school on expert witness services, and I, I have a pretty good idea of what's fair and what's not fair. And I think what we're proposing, and we've been looking at all along, certainly is fair, certainly is reasonable. And if we can get that done, then I think we can finally stop and, and break this 20% a year increase in the sewer rates that we've been looking at for the last few years, and after this year, maybe have 10% next year. That, that's my hope. I'm hoping next year, if I'm sitting here, it'll be 10%, I'm telling you, rather than 20%.
So at the moment, it's more just a reflection of the uncertainty?
Yes.
And once that uncertainty is resolved, then presumably the rates will be better understood and?
Yeah, I, I don't think they will go down, unless we are really fortunate with negotiations with them, but I don't think they'll have to continue going up as much as they have been. There's a lot of costs involved with the expansion of the Westerly Treatment Plant that they haven't charged us for, but we've been squirreling away the money, so we can pay them when they finally decide to put pen to paper on this thing.
Very good.
The, yeah, that, that back debt is clearly identified in our rate studies that we have on, you know, this year's website, last year's, it's there, they know it's there, they just haven't asked for it yet.
All right. John?
If I may, just to provide a little bit more context, I know that the board members have been immersed in this for probably at least the last seven years. Just by way of brief background, the town sends all of its wastewater to the Westerly Treatment Plant in Marlboro. Back in 1960, we wanted to have our own treatment plant on Boundary Street and send the treated effluent to the Assavet River. At the time, the Commonwealth would not allow that, and they basically forced Northborough to be a tenant in the Westerly Treatment Plant, and their permit in that plant's construction was actually conditioned upon Northborough being, being part of that. So that's where all of our, our sewage has gone since the 19, since 1970 to current day. The issue that they're facing, just like many treatment plants all over the Commonwealth, is we want more capacity so that we can serve more residents and we want more capacity so that we can serve more residents and economic development. And the EPA actually gave a permit expansion for additional capacity. And that's when Marlboro moved forward with their expansion plant, the expansion of the plant that would have handled all the capacity that Northboro needed and all the capacity Marlboro needed. And we would have an intermunicipal agreement, which is what Chris Woodcock he's referring to, of how we share the cost of the plant, just like we have done since 1970. Well, the EPA rescinded the expansion permit, Marlboro already moved forward with the plant, and it's left everybody in a bit of a limbo. So we've had decades and decades of excellent working relationships with Marlboro. It's the actions or inactions of the EPA that has made this longstanding positive relationship feel stressed. And if the EPA would release the permit and the additional capacity, I think that our discussions with Marlboro would go, I'd like to think they'd go quite smoothly because then everybody knows where they stand and everybody's assured, reasonably assured, that they're going to get what they need for their future growth. But given that the EPA has not done that, but they also haven't denied it, we've been in this limbo. And so it's made negotiations difficult because when you negotiate anything, all parties want to know, what am I giving up, what am I getting in return? And one big piece of that is the capacity. What is Northboro getting for capacity in the plant, what is Marlboro getting? And then how are we going to share those costs? That's what's made it so difficult. You know, I'm not going to say anything negative about my friends and colleagues in Marlboro, only that the situation has been made difficult by the inactions of the EPA. And we've tried to kind of focus some of our work and efforts on the regulatory agencies to try to get them to come along. So we'll all try to remain cautiously optimistic that at some point we will get some sort of a definitive answer from the EPA. And then Marlboro and Northboro will be able to work out another intermunicipal agreement. They typically run 20, 25 years. So, you know, it's just, this is an unbelievably odd and unique circumstance that we find ourselves in. But what Chris has done, working with the DBW Director, is we know that when the decisions get made and an intermunicipal agreement does finally get negotiated, that we have an increased share of those costs. And we don't want to wait to double our rates in one year. We phased it in 20%, 20%. And the other thing, and maybe, Chris, you can speak to this, is it seems like there's two, when it comes to rates, there's two types of rate structures. Those communities that have been required to upgrade their facilities and increase their rates, and those that are going to have to upgrade their facilities and increase their rates. There's nothing really unique about what's transpired here, other than we can't get to an intermunicipal agreement. But the rate increases are driven by the regulatory agencies, which drive the designs and the operational costs of those facilities. So it's not like we're doing, the town of Northboro isn't doing anything radically different. And really neither is Marlboro. We're not adding a bunch of people or changing, but the cost of treating the effluent to a higher level to protect the wetlands and the rivers and things of that nature, that's what's driving the cost. So I don't want people to think that we're doing something that's causing these 20% rate increases. It's really just a case of we're moving and phasing in. If we know the rates are going to double based on the higher level of treatment and the cost for that, then we want to phase that in, so we're not doing it all at once. And that's what we've done. And if we were in a position where we had an intermunicipal agreement, we'd be able to very logically show you all of the costs. And like we do with everything, we plan. The biggest casualty of the EPA's inaction has been our inability to plan. So we've done the best that we can, and we make assumptions. And all those assumptions are laid out very clearly in the rate study. The rates are going to increase. We don't know exactly how much, but the goal, one thing we can tell you is they shouldn't double in one year because we've been phasing them in. So I know that's a long kind of backdrop, but again, when you're listening to something like this and people hear a 20% rate increase without that context, I think they want to know what's going on, why is that happening? It's happening because we are actually being very constructive in our approach and our planning. And, you know, we're not burying our heads in the sand. We know increases are coming. So we want to try to phase those in rather than have them hit all at once. So I appreciate your indulgence in that. But 20% is a significant number. People need to understand that context.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Questions, Leslie?
Two questions, Scott. Could you explain a little bit about the programs that the town has undertaken that require the need for additional revenue?
Okay.
And second is, what is the next step in terms of finalizing the rate increase?
Okay. The first response, we have a few projects on the water side. One that's almost complete, which is the water meter replacement program. We were able to secure a $1 million no interest loan through the MWRA for 10 years. Still have to pay it back, but there's no interest. That hit the books this fiscal year, FY18. Also, through our retained earnings that we've been keeping on the water side, we were able to pay off a half a million dollars of that program. It was a $1.5 million program. Going forward, on the, in the water side, we've implemented a hydrant replacement program that's in the budget. That's $65,000 a year worth of hydrants that'll be replaced around town. Those costs need to be incurred solely by the water department. The continuous upgrades and replacement of our vehicles are reflected in the capital plan. Those are ongoing costs. Larger scale project costs are water storage tanks. Those are probably the next biggest project that the water division needs to take on. One's an aging steel tank that's in dire need of recoding or replacement. The other one's a concrete tank that's in good shape but needs to be cleaned and re-coated. So those two components, those two projects on the water side would be debt-incurring projects, I would say. And we have those reflected in the capital plan, and there are dollars associated with it further out. That's where we can see our projections of 5% rate increases. One thing I'm trying to do is get a, to start the discussion about a retained earnings approach and policy in town. Water enterprise funds, sewer enterprise funds, any independent enterprise fund should have a policy or at least an understanding on what they want to maintain for retained earnings. A little difficult on the sewer side because we're looking at maybe a $3 million bill, or we're not. But on a normal operating system, you know, and you see where your capital should be, and you have the ebbs and flows of your savings account when big things need to be purchased. But it's important that you don't drain it empty and keep it in a comfortable range. So that's, that's one thing I want to work on. On the sewer side, you know, we're in the midst of our INI program. So we're investigating every single manhole and sewer pipe in town. That is going to be a debt program. It's state mandated. The program needs to be approved by DEP December this year and then implemented over the next 15 years. It's a lot of pipe to look at. We don't know how much pipe to fix, so there's a big question mark there. So we allocate a certain amount of money every year to keep an eye on the pipes and look at them. And if we compile enough that needs to be repaired, then there's a collection system project. Our pump stations are all pretty much original with the outside of Hudson Street. There are some critical ones that need to be taken care of. We saw West Main Street on the agenda for this past town meeting. So that's going to be a debt incurred project. We're trying to balance that out with the uncertainties of the sewer going forward. So it's, sewer's a challenge, they're both a challenge, but sewer's a challenge with the question marks. What's reflected in the rate study and our finances going forward is the assumption that we're going to give them a big check to pay our back charges on the capital. And going forward, we know what the capital costs are for the project. It's public information, and that's reflected going forward. So like John indicated, we're doing it in a conservative and thought-out fashion so that there aren't, there's few surprises in a very unknown situation as possible.
That's perfect. Yeah, I think it's important for residents to have heard that. I think it's great for them to know all the details about those projects. And also then, what are the next steps for finalizing a rate increase?
We have a public hearing scheduled for August, August 15th. The Water and Sewer Commissioners will have a public hearing on August 15th. We will receive comments up to and during the public hearing, address the comments, and then the rate increases will be in the second quarter bills. So those will be the bills that everybody receives in November, the month of November.
So public hearing is the critical phrase there.
Yep, public hearing's the next one. We will, we send out a mailer to the public, we send out a bill stuffer, we put it on the website. Obviously, we become here, we went to the sewer commissioners. We do everything we can to make sure everybody's aware of what's coming.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Bill?
Scott, is there somewhere that the public can get a hold of this information so they can read it? Is it on the webpage or?
Yep, yep, it's on our webpage. After I've shown it to the Water and Sewer Commissioners, they've seen it. And tonight, the selectmen have seen it, it'll be on the website tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Yep, right on our homepage.
It's good so that people in town can view it.
It's a fun read.
I know, yeah, yeah. You know what it is, very frustrating and confusing too as well? There's a lot of information, and with the problem with Marlboro, it's even more frustrating for us because we deal with it on an ongoing basis, you know.
Right.
But thank you.
I just want to make two comments. One, there's nothing for the board to do tonight. As you all know, this is informational, it's not just informational for the board, but for the community as well. You know, when we do rate studies or we have plans that we bring forward, you know, some committees get, and boards get a little bit more attention than others. Certainly, the Board of Selectmen probably gets the most, the Water and Sewer Commission maybe not so much. So it's important to us that we be transparent, that we're showing that we have good information. And like you hear me say all the time, good information and good process will hopefully result in a good outcome. The primary point of this evening is just to get the information out there, let folks know that it's available, and they're welcome to take a look at it. The other thing that I just wanted to comment on, it kind of goes along, following up on what Leslie had asked, which is can you speak to some of the, some of the drivers behind the rate increases, the programs? One of the things that we do very well in Northboro, in my opinion, is we plan well. And the easiest thing that you could possibly postpone is infrastructure that you can't see. You know, think about bridges and roadways. Many communities and nationally, it's probably the biggest issue we have, that we're not investing in that infrastructure enough. That's visible infrastructure, right? Think about pipes in the ground, the inside of a water tank. These are things that we don't see. And if you're not watching that stuff and planning well, you can have really low rate increases, just like you can have really low taxes. But if you're creating an unfunded liability for yourselves by not fixing your roads and not taking this infrastructure, you will have more problems, it will cost you more money, and you'll spike in your rates to take care of that problem. So normal rate studies and increases is the professional and appropriate thing to be doing. Not holding and holding and holding and then have a big rate increase or deferring capital investments that need to be made. I just want to make very clear that with all of our capital planning, it's one of the things that we do really well. And we're bringing that same discipline and information and process to our enterprise funds. And that's why we're here tonight. That's why we want people to see and know what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, thank you for that.
Gentlemen, I just want, if there are no more comments?
I just want to thank you both for your excellent work in this effort. It's very complicated by the situation with the intermunicipal agreement. And the uncertainty, as you've said, forces us to be very conservative. But I think the data you do have at hand and the analysis you bring to that are just very capable, very complete. And I think you're putting us in a good position financially to be able to address those costs, you know, if and when we're finally determined. So, thank you both very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Do we hold up the race stick?
Zoom in on that.
Thank you very much, Chris. And now we're on to reports.
No reports this evening, Mr. Chair.
Don?
First thing, I received a call from the Northboro Interface Clergy Association, and they're concerned about the Applefest Parade. And they know there's not a lot they can do about it this year. But the Sunday, holding it on Sunday seems to be a problem, especially not as much with the Catholic churches, but the other churches that only have one service. They find that they lose their attendance totally on those days. They would like to see the parade move back to Saturday. And I did communicate that we really don't have much control over the Applefest Parade. But I didn't know if we as a board might want to think about it, communicate to the Applefest Committee. Not tonight, obviously, but if everybody wants to think about it. I mean, I know that for the businesses in the center of town, Sunday is better. But let's face it, at this point in time, we don't have too many businesses left in the center of town. So it's affecting the churches and just to think about it and think if we would like to throw our support one way or another on the parade. So that was a concern, and they would just appreciate any kind of effort that we could, even if they made the parade later in the day so that it doesn't bump up so close to the start time of the service. So, and then the other thing, I got several calls in the last two weeks about the situation on Ball Hill. The residents were concerned that the hearing was canceled. John, have we got a new date on that?
No, we have not. This is the hearing regarding Senator Chandler's legislation on amending agricultural composting from the Department of Agriculture and moving it to DEP. So that hearing was supposed to take place last week, I believe. And unfortunately, the Chair of the Committee passed away. So I had a note into Senator Chandler's office again. As of today, they have not rescheduled the hearing. The moment I hear, I will get that word out.
They're starting to feel total frustration, and I understand that. And I don't know if we as a board, we met with Mr. Davidian and saw the composting pile and listened to his explanation, but we haven't really met with the residents. Do we want to schedule a special meeting to meet with the residents? Because they feel like they're not being heard. And I know, John, you've been up there a lot.
Yep.
But this board has not really dealt with the residents at all.
Certainly within your purview to meet with anybody that you feel you want to. If it's, you know, if you're going to do it as a board, it would be a public meeting. You know, the frustration, and again, just because I understand not everybody is intimately involved with some of these issues as the board is. This is regarding the large-scale, you know, commercial composting operation up on Ball, on Ball Street that's being done as part of the Davidian Farm. The issue is that it is agriculturally exempt under mass general laws, and the town really doesn't have any authority or say in it, which is why we have spent our time working with the appropriate state officials to either address it from an agency standpoint or to change the legislation to change how that whole process works. Again, we listen, and we've done everything that we can at every appropriate stage. But there is, there isn't much that Town of Northboro officials can do. Because again, it's mass general law that's dictating what can take place on that site. And if we don't control mass general law, all we can do is convey the issues and problems to our legislative delegation and ask for their assistance, which we've done. So we have legislation that's been sponsored by Senator Chandler, and it has been co-sponsored by Harold Maughton in the House. And unfortunately, if we can't get to a hearing, that's the next step to further, to further this effort. That is where we would be able to testify, it's where the residents can testify. And hopefully, the regulatory agencies and the legislature can hear that and make the appropriate modifications to the public policy. But that's where, that's where it is. So certainly you can meet with anybody.
And I know that we've hoped that the state would do what we've been working toward. But the one thing, I mean, one of, some of the things that we could do, and it was brought up to me, that there's equipment, that trucks and tractors and backhoes that haven't moved in three years. You know, our agreement with the Davidians, when they, we bought rights up there, part of it says they can't have equipment that just doesn't work anymore, just laying around rusting. At least if we started to do some of the things we could do, I think that they would at least feel that we're trying. We can't, the state has a better stick than we do, and they're going to be able to do a lot more than we will. But at this point in time, I think they'd like to see us at least trying. And I know you've been up there a lot, John. I'm not criticizing.
You know, there's nothing more frustrating than having a situation in your town that you have no regulatory authority over. You're neither the permitting nor the enforcement authority for it. And in fact, it's entirely exempt under the current regulations. That's extremely frustrating for everybody involved. Believe me, I get it, it's frustrating. So that's why we, and again, if anybody who's interested, I have got a stack summarizing this whole situation in my office that any. this whole situation in my office, that anybody who wants it is welcome to it. And it shows all of the efforts and the progression of this over the last several years of everything we've tried to do, including meeting with the Secretary of Energy, who oversees the Department of Agriculture and DEP. And unfortunately, we haven't gotten any movement from the, at the agency level, which is why the only thing left to do is to try to get legislation to direct the oversight agencies to do something differently. Unfortunately, that is the solution. That is the only solution ultimately.
So, we're working to redo this meeting as soon as possible?
Again, it's a hearing of the legislature. I have, we have no control or influence over that. We literally have to wait until they, you know, we're checking with them. It's entirely up to them. I will say this, Senator Chandler very much understands how important this is. She has been a phenomenal advocate for the Town of Northborough and for the residents. And by sponsoring this legislation, the other thing that she has done is, these hearings typically take place in Boston. One of the things that she did to help us was to try to schedule the hearing locally at the Fish and Game property in Westboro, so that anybody here can easily get to it. So, that's all been fantastic. But again, the chairman of the committee passed away. They're reorganizing, and they're going to need to reschedule it. All we can do is keep asking. They know it's important to us, and we'll keep asking. But we don't, again, we don't control their schedule.
That concludes my report.
Leslie?
Okay. First word of business is, I wanted to make everyone aware of a Facebook page called the Northborough Guide, which is impressive. There are a lot of entries in there about various businesses in towns and in town and the events that they're holding, just information about what they do. And I think it's very informational. And I can see a lot of residents in town are members of that page, and a lot of people have liked that page. I just think it's very informative, and I just wanted to bring your attention to it. I also wanted to thank the Police and Fire for their monthly reports. It's always very informative. And as far as the police department goes, I would like to congratulate Officers Sullivan, Waller, and Freworth on their graduations from the various police academies, one in Western Mass and then the State Municipal Academy, correct, in Braintree?
Yes.
Yes, Braintree, okay. All of them graduated with very distinctive honors, I would say. They all did very well academically, and a lot of attention was brought to them. They were really standouts, from what I can see. So, we're really lucky to have them, and I'm glad that that information was included in our report, so we could see really what kind of individuals we have working for our police department. Very, very impressive. So, congratulations to them, and please pass that along to them if you would. Also, John, I've been getting questions, again, about the R and T building, which does come up occasionally in our meetings. And I know that, from what I understand, there are no taxes due, or no taxes in arrears at this point. But is there any way to have an official review done of that building to determine whether or not it's a hazard at this point? And has there?
Yeah, we actually had a discussion today with the building inspector regarding where that building stands. There was a-
Or doesn't.
It was, it's still standing. There was a review-
Just daily.
There was a review of the building in terms of its structural integrity.
Yeah.
The owner had a structural engineer then come back and indicate that it could still be repaired and shored up. However, the owner has not followed through on actually getting that done or submitting that. So, one of the things we discussed was, you know, at this point, again, trying to push that and move forward. As far as I know, there's been no architect engaged and no actual plan to repair the building. So, the way it rests is you either need to fix it or you need to remove it.
So, in terms of guidelines or any kind of schedule for them, what kind of timeline are they dealing with in terms of repairing this? So, it doesn't just sit and we say, oh, we're going to-
Well, at this point, at this point, we'll be back in, we'll be back in land court, more than likely, looking at forcing the removal of the building. You either have to repair it or remove it. And they've indicated that their plan is to repair it, but they have not taken reasonable actions in a reasonable period of time to actually, to bring something forward. So, then the ball's back in our court to look at going back to land court and forcing the issue. So, that's where we're at.
Okay. All right. It does come up because I think not only is it a eyesore, but it looks like something is going to happen to it at some point soon. So, it looks dangerous as well. So, the other building I wanted to ask about is the old gas station that's across from Don Cadoona. So, I've kind of lost track of that. Where is that in the plans? Is there any interest in that building and that lot? What is hap, it looks terrible.
Yeah. So, that's the old Pierce Gas Station. At one, a couple of years ago, that was our single largest delinquent taxpayer. That was purchased by a gentleman who was looking at redeveloping it into some doctor's offices or office space, potentially. He bought it as an investment, is looking to redevelopment. I think at the time that he was looking to do that, all of a sudden, we had significant development in town for, you know, St. V's and UMass, three walk-in clinics. So, I'm not sure where he stands on that in terms of his development. But the building is, you know, structurally sound, and he's just, it's up to him to determine what he wants to do with the structure. It is current in its taxes, and I do know that when we met with him, he was very interested in moving forward with the development, and that seems to have been put on hold for whatever reason.
Is it worth asking again?
Sure. We can certainly give them a call and see where they are.
Some sort of communication, just so we have some idea where he stands on that?
Sure.
So, that'd be great. Thank you. That ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie. And I would just like to follow up, I guess, on that one. Because it was a gas station, presumably had underground tanks or whatever, are there still periodic inspections or anything that take place?
Yeah, the tanks were all removed, and the land was remediated. So, any remaining monitoring wells or anything like that is between the owner and DEP. But there are no tanks there. The site was remediated.
Okay.
But as is typical with some of these old gas stations, even though you do a full remediation, sometimes there are monitoring wells or things, whatever the requirement was to close that project out. But there's no tanks sitting in the ground. Those are all gone. Everything's gone and been cleaned up to the extent required by DEP.
So, it's predominantly just the-
That's not the holdup.
Lack of visual appeal on that site that's the-
Uh, yeah.
From our standpoint.
Yes, understandably.
No environmental risks.
I mean, at least, you know, again, we had that situation, and we had back taxes. So, at least the current owner is paying the taxes on the property while he looks at the options of what he might want to do should be developed.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Beyond that follow-up question, I have no further report. John, do you have anything more you'd like to add?
No report this evening.
Okay. Public comments. It's our opportunity for the public to state their case, if they have any issues they'd like to bring to our attention. Anybody? Hearing none. And new business, closeout of Avalon Bay-Northborough Crossing mitigation funds. John?
Certainly, we're in a unique position right now. We are closing out fiscal '17. We've begun fiscal '18, and we've started planning for fiscal '19. So, this is always an interesting window in our cycle. But as we close out fiscal '17, which ended June 30th, one of the things that we do is we go back and we look at, are there any accounts that are no longer in need to be on the books and to close those out? We have a mitigation fund that the board is well aware of that dates back to, you know, 2010, and this is with regard to the Northborough Crossing and the Avalon Bay development. We have made any expenditures that needed to be made out of that account. At this point in time, there's $247,900 left in the account, and the appropriate thing to do would be to close it out, return it to the general fund. And then, essentially, what would happen is those funds, like every appropriation or account that's no longer needed, they close out the general fund, they go to free cash, and then the free cash is used typically to fund capital projects. But all appropriations of the funds would go, flow through our free cash policy and go through town meeting. So, that would be the appropriation, I'm sorry, that would be the appropriate recommended approach, as outlined in the memo from the town accountant. There's no, I can see no need for maintaining this account any longer. So, I would recommend that it close, you close it out, vote to close it to the general fund, and then it washes through and is handled like every other appropriation or available fund to the town, and is subject to town meeting vote, discussion, and appropriation.
Okay. Questions by the board?
None. I just have one question. Among the funds, there are categories, we have like a selectmen section, which predominantly is used for municipal expenditures or whatever. Is there anything that encumbers some of this funding for a particular purpose, or is it all?
Yeah, the $247,900 that we're recommending you close out to the general fund is the balance of the unrestricted gifts or mitigation. There was, as part of this process, there was $50,000 specifically earmarked for recreation that was used to build the park down at Ellsworth McAfee, and part of it was used to fund the replacement of the track down at Ellsworth McAfee Park. So, that's been expended. There was a $50,000 gift component to this mitigation earmarked for the senior center. And if you remember, originally, we were looking at potentially a van to add a transportation service and component to the senior center. But in the interim, we had a much better deal that we were able to negotiate with the Worcester Regional Transportation Authority. The WRITA asked the Town of Northborough if we would serve as the hub for their transportation services for seniors and folks in need. We agreed to do that, and so we host, we supervise the vans. So, we have multiple vans, four or five drivers, and we oversee that service, and the WRITA pays for everything. In fact, they provide us with a host payment for our responsibilities for hiring and supervising these employees. So, that has worked phenomenally for us, and that's been in place for at least six or seven years at least. It's worked very well for us. So, those funds have been sitting there. We anticipate, like, at some point, the senior center's going to need some major repair or something. So, that money is not appropriate to close out. It's earmarked for the senior center, and that will remain there until a need arises that matches it. So, at this point, we recommend leaving that, because again, that was earmarked, but closing out the general non-earmarked mitigation funds.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to close the Avalon Bay-Northborough Crossing Fund and to transfer the $247,900 balance to the general fund effective with the fiscal year 2017 year-end closing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good. Next item, update of designer selection procedures. John?
So, in order for us to engage architectural services for any significant building project, we need to have, in accordance with mass general law, Chapter 7(c), designer selection procedures. What this means is, unlike most of what we procure as a municipality, where it's the low bidder, I don't think anybody would want to hire an architect as a low bidder. So, we have the ability to hire an architect or an architectural firm based on their background, their experiences, and the relevant experience to whatever project that we're doing. And we do not have to award based on price solely. However, in order to do that, we have to have formal written designer selection procedures. And we have always maintained written designer selection procedures. The last time they were updated was 2004, when we did the senior center, which seems to be the theme tonight, the senior center. And so, I had written these designer selection procedures back in 2004. There were a lot of things that were in motion. The state was putting women and minority business requirements in. They were changing a lot of the statutes. So, these designer selection procedures that are before you tonight are basically the same ones from 2004 with a couple of distinctions, and they're very minor. One is, all of the references to all the state statutes, they renumbered everything. So, in order for our, in order for our policy to be current and relevant, I work with council, and we changed all of the references. The only other thing materially that we changed was Section 13. And Section 13 talks about, if you're going to hire an architect to do a feasibility study, under the old regulations, you had to have a peer review, and under our old regulations, you had to have a separate RFQ to move forward using the same architect. Some of the modifications they made under the Municipal Modernization Act, and some of the recent changes to the designer selection general laws, was that you no longer need to do that. So, we've made, and the language that's shown in 13 is directly out of the model designer selection procedures that the state would like to see us use as a municipality. So, the language that's in here is, very closely tracks the model that the state wants us to use. And by and large, it just makes you read it and know that there are regulations governing all of this stuff, so that you know that, and any building committee knows that. In order for us to proceed with the fire station building project, we need you to update or to adopt formally tonight these revised designer selection procedures, so that we can then issue the RFP and get moving on that project. Town council has reviewed this and approved it as the form. Again, it's not a radical difference from the procedures that we've been using all along for the library and the senior center building projects. Again, every statute reference has changed. So, that's primarily what we've changed in this new addition for you. So, I would look for the board to adopt these formally this evening.
Very good. Any comments or questions? None. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the designer selection procedures as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good.
Thank you.
Set meeting schedule for September through December. John, do you?
Yeah, as we typically do, we try to plan our meetings out at least a quarter in advance. So, for September, our typical second and fourth Mondays, September 11th and 25th, we're recommending we keep those dates. In October, we have a conflict with Columbus Day holiday. Historically, we have had one meeting in October, and that's what's being recommended here for October 16th. November, the way things lay out, we have traditionally moved from our second and our fourth Mondays to our first and our third. So, we're recommending November 6th and 20th. And then, in December, traditionally, we have one meeting. We're recommending that for December 18th.
Very good. Any questions with the board? Anybody have any obvious conflicts or anything? Don?
I move the board vote to set the meeting schedule for September through December as follows. September 11th and 25th, October 16th, November 6th and 20th, and December 18th.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Very good. And execution of cemetery deed 1024.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to execute cemetery deed 1024.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Any other business to come before the board?
We do have a need for a brief executive session regarding litigation and collective bargaining.
Okay. Executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, subsection 3, litigation and collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21, subsection 3, litigation and collective bargaining due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board. Second.
Moved and seconded. Bill?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Leslie?
Aye.
Aye. Board will return from executive session only to adjourn open session. And that...[1779.53]